Calling to all of the Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and thirteenth, uh, two thousand and thirteenth meeting of the thirty-fifth Council of City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor Odweare.
Here. First, all of the business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekell with support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Odweare.
Yes. And now, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the paper provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being discussed. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Chief.
Good evening. We're here for a swearing-in of our newest officer, Jonathan Roberts. Normally, we don't talk about someone's age. It's irrelevant. However, in this case, like everybody remember, he is twenty-two years old. And we'll put that into perspective as his achievements come along. Okay. Jonathan, at eighteen, became a certified firefighter, joined the Troy Fire Department, where he was obviously a volunteer firefighter and a staff assistant. Additionally, then, he got certified as an emergency medical technician, became an EMT for STAR Ambulance. He, uh, became a certified police fire dispatcher, and for the last two years has served as a dispatcher for the city of Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department. Last Friday, he graduated from the Oakland Police Academy. So now, he's a certified police officer. In addition to all those things over the last four years, he also earned a bachelor's degree in fire science from Adana University. And you compress all that in, he didn't have much spare time. And we're very proud of those achievements. John's parents, David and Susan, are here. Uh, they're also both firefighters. David is the assistant fire chief in Troy, and Susan, I believe, just retired from firefighting. On Friday, at the Oakland County Police Academy graduations, we met John's grandfather. Call him Jack. His name's John also, but they call him Jack. I don't believe he's here tonight. Another interesting person, he fought in World War II. He was captured, became a prisoner of war, he escaped. And when he escaped, he got back through the German lines, to the American lines, rejoined his unit, turned around, and fought in the Battle of the Bulge. And then received various field commissions, promotions during the war. He has written a book, grandfather has, called Escape: The True Story of a World War II Prisoner of War the Germans could not hold. Now, it appears that the work ethic, the remarkable work ethic that Jonathan has may have been passed down in the bloodline. Certainly, the adventure action chip seems to be an inherent trait. And so, we are very confident that this will continue. He has remarkable people skills, common sense, work ethics. We've talked to places where he has worked, where he went to school, and we get nothing but rave reviews. We think we are very fortunate to have him. In fact, we collectively, after reviewing people in October, decided to wait for Jonathan while he was in the police academy for his graduation, as opposed to taking someone instantaneously, which would have helped us during the past two months. But we knew we had the pick of the litter, so to speak, in Jonathan. So, we were happy to wait and thank the city manager for approving that.
Yes.
Now, swearing-in please.
Aye, Jonathan Roberts.
Aye, Jonathan Roberts. Been duly appointed as public safety officer.
For the city of Berkeley?
For the city of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear?
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley?
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties?
That I will perform the duties.
Of my office to the best of my ability?
Of my office to the best of my ability. Just like to say thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for my parents for showing up. If it wasn't for them, I, I wouldn't be here. I'd like to thank the city of Berkeley for giving me this opportunity to protect their city. While out job searching, City of Berkeley was number one on my list by far, and I'm very fortunate and thankful for you guys to give me the chance to protect your city, and I'll do the absolute best. Special thanks to Chief Eschman, Lieutenant Crum, who really helped me get to this point, and to everyone else from the department who I see sitting there in the back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, welcome to the team. Welcome to congratulations.
And good luck. You'll see you Friday.
That's fine. Ah, you can do it. That's fine. We are still in the citizens' comments section of tonight's meeting. Are there any additional comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Administration. My name is Josephine Brewer, and I live in Berkeley. And I would like to take this opportunity to say to each of you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and to all of our Berkeley residents. And I would like to challenge each and every one of us to lend a helping hand to anybody who's in need. And if we look around, there's a lot of opportunities, and sometimes we miss them. So let's look harder and, and really prove that this is Berkeley and that we do care. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read tonight's consent agenda?
Yes. Item number one, minutes, approval of the minutes of the regular thirty-fifth City Council meeting minutes of, excuse me, of December second, two thousand and thirteen, and work session minutes of December sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Item number two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number one, two, seven, three. Item number three, ordinance number oh, seven, thirteen, matter of approving and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-eight zoning, Article Three, General Provisions, Division One, Accessory Buildings and Structures, and Article Five, District Regulations, Division Seventeen, Schedule and Regulations, Section one thirty-eight through one, through five, twenty-seven, Notes to the Schedule of Regulations of the Berkeley City Code, Second Reading. Item number four, ordinance number oh, eight, thirteen, matter of approving and ordinance amending chapter twenty-six, Article Five, International Fire Code of the City of Berkeley Code, of the second reading. Item number five, presentation. Presentation honoring the City of Berkeley's Commercial and Residential two thousand and thirteen Holiday Spirit Awards.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Ms. Prince? Oh, uh, yes. Uh, Ms. Prince, call, please call the roll and, uh...
Okay. Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Odweare?
Yes. And now, we move to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Well, we have with us, uh, the chairman of the beautification committee, Mr. Dan Mejiesco, and you're welcome. And, uh, we turn the floor over to you.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, this evening, we wanted to actually present the winners of the second annual Holiday Spirit Award contest, and we're very excited for another great season. This year was a little more challenging because there was actually the shortest number of days between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, as far as people having the amount of time to digest their food and then get their lights up was a little bit harder. So, let's start off with the businesses. So first, let's recognize Omarah's Restaurant. As they did last year, they did a fantastic job with the lighting outside and creating an incredibly welcoming and festive place to dine. We also wanted to recognize Milano's Hair Studio. They did an excellent job as well with the lighting and, uh, brightening up the inside as well, the outside of the, the business. And as well, the Marathon Gas Station did an excellent job with their wreath and the garland with lights all around the front and the side of the business. It's a little difficult to see there with the lights, but they did a great job. Residential homes as well. Let's start off with our, our house here on Mortenson, two, three, four, two. This is the home of the Kierd family. And, uh, actually, I, I know Colleen, and her father lives there, and it was a pleasure to find out after the fact that they won. So, why don't you actually come on up now if you would like, and, uh, the city council can, uh, shake your hand and congratulate you? While they're up there, I'd just like to highlight that, uh, the tree inside, the lighting of the bushes outside, and it's really a beautiful display. We also have the home at two, seven, six, nine Tyler. I don't know if they're represented here at all tonight. Yes, he is. All right. Fantastic. And, uh, but as you can see, there's a, uh, the lights around the, the roof, the, the trees in front, and, uh, the wreath out in front of the home. I know that's a lot of work. It's deterred me from actually doing this at any point, so congratulations. Come on up as well and, uh... And lastly, among the homes, we have the, the house at one, seven, zero, six Harvard Road. Again, you can see the, the shrubs, the garland, the wreath. It's a lot, a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. Is that home represented here? All right, come on up. Thanks again. So we want to obviously thank all the businesses, all the homes, last year's winners as well. Did a fantastic job once again, but we wanted to expand the, with the pool as well. So, thanks. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
What a wonderful job by everybody along the line, and thanks to the beautification committee for the time and effort they put into, uh, this kind of competition and the selection of the winners. So we congratulate all the winners for beautifying our, uh, our community.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Public hearing, matter of conducting a public hearing regarding the Community Development Black Grant Program two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve the public hearing, CBDG public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel at this time, uh, first, let me say good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and to members of, of the public guard there and our residents as well. Uh, under this first item, Your Honor, what we're looking for simply is to hear comments from the residents regarding the items that we are recommending for, for consideration for CDBG funding. Now, if you'd like, Your Honor, I'd be happy to go over those items with you very briefly, or we should just simply wait and see if there's anyone who wishes to make a comment.
Well, first of all, we'll complete the public, uh, comments section. Is there any? Yes.
Hello. I am not a resident. I work at Haven. Is this the appropriate time for me to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my name is Megan Widman. I'm the director of our legal advocacy program at Haven. Haven is Oakland County's Center for the Prevention and Treatment of Domestic and Sexual Violence. I'm sure many of you have heard of us, and I'm here today to thank you for your past support of Haven, and also to just give you a very brief overview of what kind of services we are providing to your residents. This past year, we served fifteen thousand residents of Oakland County, um, and a number of those were from Berkeley. Specifically, there were seventeen that came from Berkeley, um, which served, um, which we served in our legal advocacy program, and that's where we go to court with them when they have to testify against their assailants. Um, we also serve them in our personal protection order office, where we assisted them in obtaining a personal protection order. Um, we also, um, have a crisis and support line, which any residents, um, in fact, anyone in the country is able to call, and that's a twenty-four hour, um, crisis line, where folks can call and get assistance for what they are struggling with in terms of domestic and sexual violence. And then, we also provided counseling to a number of Berkeley residents. Um, all of these services that we provide are free of charge. We would never charge a victim, um, for the services that we provide because we would never want that to be a barrier to getting services. Um, and the only thing I want to leave you with is that one in four women will be a victim of domestic violence in their lifetime, and one in five women will be victims of sexual assault in their lifetime. So these are very common crimes. I know sometimes it might seem like we provide a very specialized service that is not needed by very many people, but, um, it is something that is much needed in our community, and we are actually the only organization that provides a service in Oakland County. So I thank you again for your past support of Haven. I'm going to leave some brochures with the clerk in case you want to learn more, and I do, you know, if you have any questions for me right now, I can answer those.
Are there any questions for Megan?
No. Thank you very much for your time.
We very much appreciate all, all you do. It is a critically important service in the county, and your statistics simply underline its importance.
Thank you very much.
I think you, uh, Councilmember Stedman?
I just had a comment similar to yours. I'd like to really thank you. I don't think people realize the incidents, the, um, severity of incidents and the lasting effects of domestic violence.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, then, we will close the public hearing section, and we won't, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Yes. Resolution number R forty-nine thirteen, matter of adapting the Community Development Black Grant Program application for the two thousand, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve R forty-nine thirteen?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekell?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, I don't know how to start this, uh, presentation, except to say that almost every year we start, or at least most cities, and we're not, uh, from the unusual, have been receiving, uh, less and less funds from the Community Development Block Grant, uh, program. And this year, uh, it has been just as difficult for us to come to you to recommend, uh, services, because obviously, there are so many needs out there, but only so much, uh, funds that are available. So, obviously, these are our recommendations, Your Honor. If you would like to make some changes, uh, please let us know. Once I go over these items very quickly, I'll ask our, uh, Director of Planning, uh, Ms. Amy Vanson, to, uh, help me address any questions that you may have. We are recommending the following projects for your consideration. Now, please know that we have a total of forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars that's being recommended for funding in the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen fiscal year. This year, or I should say the upcoming year, we are recommending twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars for parks and recreation facilities. Under this item, uh, this will allow our Parks Departments to make improvements to Lays and Bee Field. This includes improving the, uh, the dugouts, replacing the gates, uh, maybe doing the scoreboard improvements, and possibly doing some other, uh, landscaping, uh, improvements as well. I know that we have listed here a possibility to maybe construct a, a public facility of some sort with a storage facility, but, uh, these funds would not be enough to be able to do all that. So, for the most part, we'll be doing maintenance, uh, types of, uh, improvements in this area for Lays and Bee Field. Under, uh, public services, or disabled services, as it's called, we're recommending a total of seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Now, uh, the purpose of this money is to allow us to purchase, uh, large print books for our library, and this will allow us to buy, uh, at least for the next three years, up to two hundred and fifty large print books. If we couple it from the funds that we, um, allocated last year, it'll allow us to add a total of about five hundred and fifty large print books to our collection. And then, lastly, uh, we are recommending, under public services or yard services, a total of five thousand dollars. Now, this, these funds will be used to help us, uh, provide assistance to, uh, income-qualified senior residents in our, in our community, and this is to do things such as, uh, snow shoveling and lawn maintenance. Again, um, last year, uh, the city had allocated our, uh, public services to Haven. This year, we are recommending, uh, that it be funded to, uh, to yard services. Uh, again, this is a very difficult recommendation. There's only so much money that we have. But please know that we did allocate some funds last year, whereas we did not give any monies for, uh, public service, or yard services, I should say, uh, in last year. So, again, counsel, whatever you do, if you decide to allocate some funds to, uh, Haven, then we will have to reduce some of these numbers. And again, some of them are limited because, um, I know that there are certain percentages that we can only, uh, allocate the monies for. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city planner, Ms. Vanson, to help me address any questions, 'cause this is the tough one. Ms. Vanson?
I had a whole speech ready.
Oh, good.
We used to get about ninety thousand dollars a year. Back in ninety-six, that's how much we got. And so, when you hear on the news Congress cutting things, this is one of the things that gets cut. The only reason Berkeley is able to participate is because we're in Oakland County, and we have, uh, we have a subrecipient agreement that works with Oakland County. We are too small of a community to deal directly with Department of Housing and Urban Development. Royal Oak, Clinton Township, Detroit, those are cities that are large enough to work directly with HUD. We would not qualify if it were not for Oakland County and them, uh, having subrecipient agreements. And so, the money goes to Oakland County. They have, um, a home improvement program that they, they provide home improvement loans. That is a portion of this money, and so Oakland County handles all of that, and so we don't have to do that. But there is, there are ratios that still have to be maintained under the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and one of those is that services need to be capped. So, soft costs, such as yard services, such as counseling services, such as large print books, things that are not, uh, bricks and mortar projects, are capped. And that cap has changed depending on how much money, um, Oakland County is getting and how many communities are participating. Last year, Pontiac was added under Oakland County because of what's going on in Pontiac. Originally, they had dealt directly with HUD, and so that changed the ratios. And so, we are capped at thirty percent. Oakland County, uh, does cap the number of projects or number of accounts that the City of Berkeley can undertake. We, we could have Haven. We are under the cap, so if council wanted to add Haven, but you need to understand that then there's less money either to disabled services or yard services. Last year, we funded yard services and disabled service, we funded disabled services and Haven. We did not fund yard services. Yard services is down to about seven hundred dollars. They've, they've had a busy time, and so, I'm not really sure how they're going, how they managed the snow that fell on Saturday. I'm sure they did. Um, but that is something, this is an ongoing need in the community, and so, we, we have allocated money that will come due, um, in the summer. Uh, our new library director did request money to, again, increase the, the volumes of large print books that are available for, uh, residents and non-residents to check out. And, uh, anyway, and with regard to the Lays and Bee Field project, which is a different kind of project, and so it's not capped, um, I did speak with the Recreation Director this afternoon. I wasn't certain if he was going to be here, and so I got clarification that there's, because you can't use this money for maintenance projects. They're very picky about that. You can improve, but you can't maintain. Um, we're gonna add fencing. We're gonna add gates. The dugouts don't have roofs, so we're gonna add roofs. And I'm going to see, I have a call into Oakland County, but can you believe it? The person's taking two days off. So, I don't have an answer on whether or not we can change the field size from baseball to softball size, 'cause I guess the infield, there's a difference with that. I'm gonna see if we can do that, and if we can get it all done in twenty-eight thousand dollars, so, fingers crossed. Do you have questions?
Thank you. Um, I, 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 I do. I'm pleased that, uh, the dugouts are getting roofs, but there are people on the roofs being terrorized as well. And it troubles me greatly that Haven is not getting something. Uh, that's just my perspective. Because of the, um, we had seventeen people, according to the statistics from our city. And I think we need to pull our weight also and, and, uh, and help Haven, either through this allotment of money or through some other mechanism, because I'm persuaded that, uh, the kind of statistics that we all know about, uh, are very troubling, and people who help protect and secure people in dangerous situations deserve our support. And I also believe that would be the view of the residents of the city.
Just, just to clarify, the money that would be used for parks and recreation, we can't take it out of that. Okay. So you're either taking it out of large print books or yard services, just to clarify?
Or someplace.
Or general fund?
Or general fund.
Yes.
But, uh, I want to hear from my colleagues.
Um, I totally concur with the mayor. I think that we should be providing for, um, uh, the Haven. Uh, it's, it's such an ongoing, especially in this economy, it's a very, uh, deep-rooted problem in, in this country, and I think we need to support our residents who have suffered this.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You pretty much took most of my words. Um, I was troubled when I saw Haven wasn't getting any funds this year. Um, all you have to do is listen to the news, read the newspaper daily, hourly, whatever, and I, I would like to find some way to also fund Haven.
Thank you. Any, Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Yeah, I certainly, I agree with my colleagues. I, I think the question, uh, that, that we're gonna have to make here is where does that money for Haven come from? We've, we've got a couple options, um, that Mr. DeSessa and Ms. Vanson have given us. We also have a third option, uh, that is not one of those two, and, and that is to decide from the general fund that we want to fund this and, and put it in the budget annually so that we don't come into, to have this problem every year. Uh, we, we know that funding is gonna continue to shrink from the government, from the CDBG, and this is something that, uh, you know, we haven't heard from everybody, but, but at least those of us that have spoken, and certainly everybody else will have an opportunity, is very passionate about and, and committed to. So I think as a council, if we are, uh, committed to that, then, then we have a decision to make, if we're committed to go to the general fund for it. Or, again, we have these options here.
If I can interject, the minimum funding for CDBG money is twenty-five hundred dollars.
So, we could split?
Two thousand and five hundred, if you're gonna designate it through CDBG. You can't just give them a thousand.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is a question for the administration. What's the history of, what have we funded Haven at in the past and for how many years?
Twenty-five hundred. That, that's the, in recent history, that's the minimum that we've been able to, that they'll allow you to allot to a particular project. I think back in ninety-six- I think back in 96 or 97, we might have given $1,000 or $2,000. But lately, it's been $2,500. And as I noted in my report, we've been trying to rotate. Last year, we didn't fund Yard Services. We funded Large Print Books and Haven. And so, we've been sort of rotating through between these three.
Mayor Protem.
Because of the uncertainty of, of what we're dealing with here, and, and the Public Services, Disabled Services and the Yard Services are important things that I think we'd like to fund as well. Now, I understand we can't fund everything through here. And we do have a past history of funding Haven. And I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say about proposing $2,000 from the general fund to Haven. And in annual items, certainly, we could talk about it at this year's budget meetings coming up.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. If I may, if I could recommend to the council, if you want to use $2,000 to spend for, for Haven, my recommendation would be that you would reduce the Disabled Services line item by 2,000.
$2,500.
Or by $2,500. And then, what you would do is appropriate dollars for books coming out of the general fund. That would be the best way to go.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Very good. Ms., Councilmember Edgar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Why can't we just reduce the amount that's going to the Disabled Services?
Great question. Haven is, is a private nonprofit group, okay? So, then what, and underneath state law, there are very strict requirements on reporting. And, and also, there would be an accounting that would have to be done, that would have to come to the council, and there'd have to be formal presentations if you were to use general, general fund dollars directly. Whereas in the past with Haven, I know the funding came directly from Oakland County to Haven. And you would not have, Haven would not have to meet that requirement with the Berkeley City Council. It may, it would have to with Oakland County, but not here at this level. So, the cleaner way and most efficient way to stay in compliance with state law would be to, to reduce the 7220 and then fund the books that way.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for this report and for the opportunity to comment on this as a, as a council here. Certainly, this, I, I won't repeat all of the heartfelt sentiments from my colleagues here, but I certainly put my support behind that. And to this exact point, I was asked, I was thinking about that same question in terms of the advantages or disadvantages of, of funding Haven through this program or through the general fund. So, so, Mr. Finance Director, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
From a process perspective, I think what we're all trying to do here is ensure that, that those in need have the services available to them with a minimum amount of overhead required. And it sounds like leveraging this program to, to fund this would, would ensure streamlined operations for Haven without additional reporting requirements. That way, they can address that energy towards where they need to focus. So, I would support an amendment or a motion. I'd be glad to make something to that effect if it's to amend this to, to, to reduce the Disabled Services by 2,500 and add an item in here for that same amount to support Haven. And then, during the normal budgeting process, right? Because this is for 2014, 2015, so this is in the summertime. We'll have the robust dialogue about the proper funding for things like the Large Book Programs and things.
Correct.
I support that.
He's making that motion, supported by Councilmember Kadek on this amendment. Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on the amendment?
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, we'll turn back to the main motion. Is there any additional discussion on the main motion? Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R 4913?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Happy New Year.
Ms. Prince, would you please call, uh, read item number four?
Resolution number R 5013, made of approving a resolution accepting the gift of repairing the city's clock from Maybel Frazier.
Is it a motion to approve R 5013?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. DeSessa.
Council, under this item, we're simply recommending to you to formally accept this, this gift from the Frazier family. As you can see in the resolution, the City of Berkeley, for the past 14 years, has had the privilege of having a city clock located in front of our historic fire hall. And this resolution simply accepts the donation from Maybel Frazier for having the clock restored to working order at no expense to the city. And we'd also like to recognize and thank her for her efforts to maintain the city's history and for her generous gift to the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see former Mayor Frazier in the audience. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff, I want to thank you for, and I appreciate very much for following up with my offer. And everything's hunky-dory, and the clock is going strong again. I noticed Saturday night, the lights were out. So, I went out and purchased lights, and tonight, the lights are on. So, I think when I gave one of the reporters the comment about the ghosts in the attic, perhaps that's it. But I, I would like to check with Mr. Schuler tomorrow. And maybe they had to do something, but I did buy the bulbs.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, I, I will have Mr. Schuler call you. Is that okay?
Sure, that's just fine.
Perfect. Thank you.
There's no point in having him store extra bulbs now and in their way if they're not needed. So, that's why I thought, thank you very much, everyone. And, and the Frazier family is very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional comments of Member Kadek?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Mayor Frazier and her family and everybody that was involved, Mr. Schuler and, and everyone that came out to fix it in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R 5013?
Yes, yes, sorry. Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Yes, motion number M 6913, made of approving a Phase One environmental study in the amount not to exceed $3,000.
Is it a motion to approve M 6913?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadek, with support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. DeSessa.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, under this item, I know that, at least it is my hope that the $3,000 will be significantly much less than what's required. But we were not sure in terms of the cost for, for this item. So, the, the most that we thought this, this type of study would cost us would be at least $3,000. But just for the public out there, so you know what this item is all about. The City of Berkeley, for many years, has been looking at purchasing the Oxford property as a mitigation land for the cell tower area that we had, that we are using at Community Park. So, by doing this, it will allow us to help us improve our grant application for DNR grants and things of that sort. And of course, more import, most importantly, is that in accordance with our master plan, this will allow us to increase the size of green space. And that's one of the, one of the most important items that the city can do by purchasing this land. Of course, before we do this, we must first conduct this, this type of testing. Although, we're confident that, that this will, will go over very easy. And we are working with the school officials to make sure that, that this will be done. And of course, Mr. Mayor, City Council, we are asking that, that if this is approved, that we, we not acquire this land until this, this study is completed. Now, I have with us this evening, Mr. Tom Caldwell. He is the Director of Parks and Recreation. And he has been working with our engineers as well and with the school to make sure that this is done in a timely fashion. So, with that, Mr. Caldwell, if there's anything else you'd like to add, please join us. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Goes without saying that having the opportunity to add green space and provide more opportunity to the residents of Berkeley is certainly very, very exciting. We're all looking forward to, you know, to this, to this opportunity. So, there's a couple of things at play here. You know, really, before we, you know, spend 250 pennies on anything, we need to make sure it's safe. Because you know that if we turn this Oxford property into parkland, there's going to be kids eating dirt and chewing on grass and certainly falling down and skinning their knees. So, we need to make sure that it's safe. That's pretty obvious. You know, in the process with the DNR, it's a, it's a 12-step process, actually. Theresa McCarlton, Deputy Director, and I have been working pretty hard on this process. Kevin Price, you know, he's, you know, had, had his hands in the mix as well. And so, together, we've gotten through the first seven steps. And so, basically, we had to get the DNR to approve the Oxford property as mitigation land for Community Park. And so, just to make sure everyone's clear, the, the Community Park property, Community One in particular, to build that, that aspect of the park, we used grant funds from the DNR. And so, when we put the cell phone tower on that grant-assisted land, that became what's called converted space. And so, we need to use the Oxford property as mitigation land. And what that will do for us is, you know, obviously, it, it really, it doesn't make a difference. We don't have to go through this process. But the way that'll help us is if we apply for future grants with the DNR. Currently, you know, we lose up to 50 points per application due to, you know, due to the converted land. Now, we had applied for a Recreation Passport Grant. They awarded over $5 million to 19 different communities. Unfortunately, 87 communities had applied, us being one, and we did not get that grant. So, we were, we were disappointed with that because this is the first time in a long time we, you, you approved for us $25,000 in land improvements out of the general fund, out of our rec revolving. So, we're really looking forward to that granting, you know, to help us do some great things. So, anyways, moving forward, the due diligence is one aspect of things that needs to happen to continue through this 12-step process. There will be some more expense outside of this one. We'll certainly detail that for you, you know, in a council meeting to come. But again, it's a, it's an exciting process. I think it's a process that is worthwhile and will certainly benefit us moving forward.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, I guess, clarify and highlight a couple of things that Director Caldwell said. There really are two reasons why you would want to do this or why I would recommend that you do this. One is for the land conversion mitigation reasons that Mr. Caldwell mentions. But even, even apart from that, if you take that out of the equation, it's just a good, prudent, modern-day approach to buying real estate anywhere in the country. The Phase One environmental study that is being proposed here is just your very basic entry-level, if you will, environmental site assessment. It's fairly non-invasive. In fact, it may not be invasive at all. It involves the experts looking at the historical uses and structures that have been on, on the property. They look at aerial photos. They just find out whatever they can about the property. It does involve a walkthrough of the property. They probably wouldn't want to do it on a day like today with six inches of snow. But they just look for things that you would expect, you know? Bear spots, other, other things that would indicate to their trained eyes that there may be an issue here requiring further investigation. Now, our expectation is that they are going to find that there is no, no evidence of environmental issues and no recommendation to proceed to the next level. But you won't know until you get there. And if they do find something, a red flag, so to speak, then they would probably, the consultant would probably come back to us and recommend a Phase Two, which involves the soil boring and testing and lab work and that sort of thing. But it's something that we, we need to do. We have been talking to the school district about purchasing the property. We have a draft agreement, which is in, in pretty good form. I've talked to the school district attorney recently about adding language to provide for our due diligence in a period of time to do that and the ability to opt out in the event that we're not satisfied with the results. And they've been very reasonable and agreeable to that. So, so everything is, is moving forward. And I would expect that probably at your next meeting in January is when we would be asking council to take a look at the actual purchase agreement and giving it your, your blessing or not. And then, I think it would be at that point that the consultants would, would go out and do that work. They may be able to do much of their data gathering even before that point.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Actually, the city attorney reminded me of one more thing. When I, I spoke with the school superintendent this morning regarding this issue, and one of the, one of the questions, obviously, that's on everyone's, everyone's mind is if, of course, if the school would be willing to allow us to conduct this type of testing. Because obviously, if something did occur, then, then they would be responsible for, for addressing the issue. Again, we, we, we don't assume that that's going to happen. We're very confident that it'll, things will be okay. Nonetheless, when I spoke with the school superintendent, he requested that we proceed with this, with this, with this process. However, that until he goes before the, the school board, which is in January, he's asking us to, to hold off until then to actually conduct the test, which will be, I believe, at the latest would be, they meet the first Monday, I believe, in January, which is the 6th. And then, they'll have a work session then. And then, after which, a few days later, something around either the 13th or the 16th, then they will make a final decision. So, until that date, Your Honor, they're asking us to go ahead and proceed with this, with this process, but to hold off until actually conducting the, the testing till after January, the 13th or the 16th.
Very good. That seems reasonable. I, the school board and the superintendent has been most cooperative over the period of the last several months of discussion of this topic. And I'd certainly like to thank them for the, the, the spirit of willingness to expand green space. Because their interest and our interest turns out to be the same thing, to, to improve the amount of park space and green space available to our residents. And I'm glad to see things working in, in a way that benefits all of us. Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Thank you. Just to clarify for residents who might not be aware of, you know, with the mitigating, he said it, Mr. Caldwell said it's where the cell tower is. But it's actually all the land around where the cell tower could fall, the drop zone. How tall is that tower?
It's 100 feet.
So, it's 100 feet. So, it's all the way around. That's why, you know, purchasing the property would, would make us whole or closer to whole in the eyes of the DNR, because that's a lot of space. It's not just the tower that you see standing there. It's also the space all around it, which is quite substantial. As far as moving forward with the, with the testing of soil, so that the Phase One, so that we can move closer to a purchase agreement, I know it's something that members of council have been saving up for and, and putting things aside for a number of years. So, we're very happy to be, be moving forward with this. And when it got to the point where we had saved enough money and we were able to enter into some negotiations with, with the district, as, as Mayor said, they have been very hospitable, and, and we've been able to, to make negotiations that, that work out for both entities. You know, the winner in, in all of this is not us. It's, it's not the school district. There are certainly pros and cons for, for both of us in this. But the residents in that area who have been parkless for quite some time, since the school went down and, and construction started and a number of other things have happened in that area, haven't had anywhere, you know, around the parks or the anchors of our community. And not having a park in that area has been something that, that we've been working to remedy for a long time. And I'm very pleased that we have gotten to the point now where it, it seems that we are moving more quickly into that direction into that direction and, and again, working with the school district to ultimately do what's best for the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for this, uh, presentation and for the research into this. I echo those same sentiments. I think the winners would be the city and its residents and the families. Uh, and you opened the conversation about the safety aspects of it and, and, uh, you had me there. I think that makes all the sense in the world, plus all, of course, all the other, um, responsible things that we want to do with this. Uh, just as a point of clarification, the memo that was provided listed a dollar amount of $2,000. Is that, uh, still what we think this is or is that, uh?
No, we decided to increase it and that just wasn't a change. I thought that had been done.
I did. I updated it, but you downloaded it before I.
Okay, so the official, I was just too quick in getting my materials. I had to prepare for tonight and I have the wrong number.
I should have sent you an email to tell you that.
All right. Well, thank you. Good. I appreciate that because I was going to be willing to support an amendment if necessary, but it sounds like the official one is for the correct dollar amount. Good.
We just stepped it a little, Your Honor, because of the, there may be some, um, unexpected engineering costs. And again, we're not sure, but we, we're thinking it's going to be really, really low, but we'll see.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you again. My, my question was just to make sure that we properly funded this so that we could be successful. And so, if that's the right amount, then I would, I would certainly support that.
Okay, thank you.
I did speak with, uh, Tom Beal at HRC today and, you know, the number, the estimate, you know, will fall within that. So, we should be good.
Great. Thanks again.
Very good. Councilmember Blanchard.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick comment. I think the city attorney covered most of it, but I'm sure the residents understand that this is not soil boring. This is not any kind of lab analysis. It's a walk-through. It's a look for contamination. It's a historical records check. Uh, it's a 40-year, uh, survey of, of past property owners and it's, that's been part of school property for what, 64 years now? So, that should be fairly easy. So, this should be accomplished without any problem. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kadek.
Thank you. When Eli Construction bought that half, was any, did they come around and check the DNR? So, and if they did, would, and would, did they check the whole property or just the part he was using?
Yeah.
My understanding is that they did require them as well to do some type of testing, uh, whether it was the DNR or whomever. I'm, I'm sure that.
It would have been the, the developer of that property. That would have been just standard operating procedure, particularly when you're building new residential homes. Um, I don't know this, but I would be highly surprised if they did not go through the same type of process and were satisfied that the, the property was safe and, and clean from a, an environmental standpoint.
And, and to the best of my knowledge, excuse me, Your Honor.
Yeah, but I'm saying, did that include, I'm sorry, Madam.
Go ahead.
Did that include our half or do you think they just did the half?
Well, I would expect, when, when you do a Phase One environmental survey, you are not just going to stop at the particular property boundaries because one of the things you're looking at, you want to know what's going on in the surrounding property. You can't do it with blinders and then ignore that maybe there were landfills or illegal waste dumps next door. So, typically, they would be looking at the specific property, but also the general area.
So, I'm saying, would there be a report on record already that we could get?
It would not be on record. It would, uh, the developer, developer may, uh, very well have that type of report, but it's, it would not be a public record. It would be a private study.
Okay, so we couldn't get a copy of?
You could ask them for it, but typically, people don't.
Doesn't hurt to ask. The worst thing to say is no.
Typically, people don't wave that sort of thing around, but.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam.
Mr. Sessa.
I, I agree with the, with what the city attorney said. But my understanding is that regardless, we would still have to conduct our own.
Oh, sure.
And, and that is why we, we still do that.
I took the question, just, you know, any, any little bit of information, uh, helps. And in fact, I, I wouldn't be surprised if, um, Hubler, Roth and Clark or their, their subconsultant, I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, among the people they talked to would be, uh, the developer or whoever did the study for them. I mean, that would be part of their historical search. I'm, I'm quite sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else on this topic? Hearing done then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-6913?
Yes. Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dooley?
Yes. And now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and Councilmember Blanchard is up first.
Your Honor, I don't have much time. I just want to wish everybody a, a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Um, I want to thank the, um, committee for the parade, the, um, Holiday Lights Committee. It was wonderful again this year and all the activities were wonderful and the hot chocolate was wonderful. And thank you very much. Um, I think we have one of the prettiest parades around because we do it at night. Uh, the library, um, has had a couple of programs. They had a, a trio called the RJ Spangler Trio featuring Larry Smith, and it was a jazz concert. And 72 people attended this, that, um, and on November 13th and, uh, was very well received. Um, the, in the lobby of the, of, uh, the library, they have a giving tree right now. And the tree is decorated with ornaments and each ornament has, um, something they would like. And, um, if somebody would like in the price of what it is. And if you would like to do that, you can fill out something and give it to them, or give the donation to them. And they will purchase it for the library and then recognize, um, the individual who donated it, um, on the item that they're donating. And another thing, um, they have something happening in January. If, uh, Santa brings you an iPad, a Kindle or other devices here, um, they're having a downloadable ebook class on Wednesday, January 8th at, uh, 6:30 PM. And you have to call the library or stop by, um, the reference desk to register for this class. It is free and it sounds like it's something that would be good for people such as myself. And the beautification committee, which I'm also on, um, they did a wonderful job. It's very nice to see that committee active again. It's, it's a very nice committee and, um, they did a wonderful job selecting, uh, the winners for this year's lights contest. And that's all I have tonight. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Edith Lovejoy Pierce once wrote, "We will soon open the book. Its pages are blank. We are going to put words on those pages ourselves." The book is called Opportunity and its first chapter is titled, "New Year's Day." So, as I think about the, the Book of Opportunity and the words that we will put on there, what will our words be? What will our best moments be? What will we learn from our mistakes? Who will we thank? When I think about the opportunities we have, and we've heard many of them here even this evening, we have opportunities to join committees and, and meet and work with great people. We have opportunities to support something that we deeply believe in. We have opportunities to think differently about something or someone that we may have had doubts in the past. We have the opportunity to spend more time doing what we truly love to do and to forgive others who have wronged us in the past. We have opportunities to forgive ourselves for what we either did or didn't do. We have a difference to make, we have an opportunity to make a difference to someone who loves us and an opportunity to make a difference to someone who we'll never meet. So, what will your book for 2014 look like? Will it be a story of sorrow or one of happiness? Who other than you, who other than we are in a position to make our stories a reality? So, I look forward to opening that book with you, with us, this 2014 book that we will write together and so we can and will move Berkeley forward. Have a safe and happy holiday season. And here's to, here's to closing out 13 and the fantastic 14 that will be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I too am very interested to see what that book says. Councilmember Baker, very excited, uh, for 2014. Certainly, a lot of, uh, a lot of things going on for all of us. I too want to wish everybody a very prosperous New Year, Merry Christmas coming up next week. I also want to thank the parade committee for all of the hard work and, and the committee and the volunteers and everybody else that puts that night together. I, I, I say it every year, but it's, it's by far one of the best things that I get to do a, as a esteemed member of this body, is to walk in that parade and just see everybody lined up and, and all the kids get so excited when Santa comes. All the kids, except my children, who are scared to death of him. But everybody else loves it when Santa comes. Addison told me after, she said, "Dad, the parade was great until Santa got there." She may be the, might be the only child that said that. She, she's four. Um, but we, we have one of the volunteers in the audience, Mr. Doug Deeds was working that night. I want to thank him a, as well. Um, but it is, it's just a very, very special night. Um, it doesn't matter if it's cold. It's, it's nice when it snows, but every night, it's just a fantastic time. It's something that I look forward to year after year. I want to congratulate my Uncle Rich. Uh, he was one of the award winners today from the beautification committee, uh, 2769 Tyler. I had absolutely nothing to do with it. I had no idea that he, he was a winner. He called me and asked about it and I didn't see the winners listed in my packet, so I said, "I, I really have no idea." So, uh, congratulations to him. I know he's put in, uh, a number of years on his house. And finally, I want to say happy birthday to my other little girl. My daughter Emma is two today and I, I certainly hope that she is in bed, but if she's not and she's still watching, happy birthday. Daddy loves you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Edgar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to express my gratitude to the parade committee. What a wonderful job they did this year. Um, I think everyone had a lovely time, really one of the special nights that Berkeley celebrates. Like I said, last week, we certainly participated. All the lights, um, the beautification committee certainly captured some of the best of the best. Um, nice job there. And I want to express how proud I am of all of us. Standing strong for Haven, um, shows the kind of people that we are and the kind of city that Berkeley is. And I'm incredibly proud to be a part of this. I hope everyone has a very happy holiday season and I too am looking forward to that book.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I too want to thank the Holiday Lights Parade Committee because, as everyone says, they do a great job every year. And it can never be said enough how appreciative we are that we have them. I want to wish everyone a happy and a healthy New Year. Um, I want to wish the Lions a healthy night tonight and, uh, hopefully they'll, uh, win. I'm really excited to see the property moving forward. Uh, I know that I've been in contact with a lot of the people and Mayor's been and, and I'm, I'm really excited to see things are moving forward and the great camaraderie we have with the school board. Uh, a few weeks ago, our last meeting, the mayor mentioned that he attended, uh, the National League of Cities. He came back pretty excited and with a lot of new ideas. And I would just like to know, uh, from administration if it's possible earlier in the agenda next month that maybe we could put it on the agenda to possibly explore the idea of becoming a member of National League of Cities. Because I don't only, I think not only will it benefit them, but it'll definitely benefit us and our residents. And last but not least, in the tradition that has been started since I've been here, um, well, actually, the mayor started it. In Hebrew, I'd like to say, "Chag moletit sameach." Merry Christmas to everyone. And the word "moletit" is the word birth, so we're celebrating the birth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and have a safe year.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Oh, I don't know how to top any of that. Except, uh, to also ex, express my appreciation to the, uh, Holiday Parade Committee. My favorite part was the bands. Uh, I'm still suffering with a cold for staying out there. Uh, but it was, uh, it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed it. I got to spend it with, uh, with, uh, I guess, one of the spectators. She was a small child and she and I were out there jumping up and down, not because it was, we were dancing, but because it was so cold. But anyways, uh, it was a lot of fun. And I want to thank the, uh, the holiday committee. Great, great job. Also, I'd like to express my appreciation to the beautification committee. I'm so glad that they're coming together. Uh, many of them have lots of ideas as to how they wish to, uh, beautify the, the, the city. You know, Mr. Deeds, uh, surely has me on my toes all the time on the many things he wants to do. So, I want to send a, a special thank you to, to him and to the rest of the committee members as well. It takes a lot of time for them to go, uh, go around the city of Berkeley and, uh, looking at all the, uh, houses. I remember the first year, it was so difficult to choose. There were so many. This year, obviously, because of the weather and, and the holidays just quickly came upon us, um, we didn't have as many lights. But we're hoping that people will, uh, will, uh, continue to, um, to decorate their homes and maybe next year, we'll get even, even more participants. And then, uh, just going along with, uh, with Councilman Baker's, uh, book, I, I think we, we have already started to, uh, to write some of those lines. I personally want to thank Mayor City Council for your time, uh, this past Friday at our, uh, work session to begin discussing some key issues that we'll be facing. It's, it's going to require some very difficult choices. Um, nowhere near the, the small discussion that we had with Haven today. It is going to be 10 times or 100 times bigger when it comes to the, uh, the decisions that the city council will, will need to examine, uh, as we move on. But I want to thank you. Uh, I know many of you took your own personal time away from your work and I really appreciate that. I also want to express my appreciation to the staff. There's a few of them in particular, um, Mr. Derek Schuler, our, our Public Works Director, Mr. Tom Caldwell, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and of course, our Finance Director and, uh, and my assistant, Finance Director David Sabuda, and, uh, and my assistant Darshel Strickland-Love, who are all very key instrumental individuals who sat down to help me, um, uh, express, uh, the, the concept to the city council. And, uh, and again, I cannot thank you enough for that. We're still going to meet one more time in January to finalize that, hopefully, make some decisions based on the recommendations that the city council came. But, um, but I think it's the first step in, in writing on, on that book, to see where we're going. So, with that, thank you, Your Honor. And, well, I forget, I know. I won't forget. Staying with tradition, um, obviously, um, I am bilingual. I speak Spanish. My ancestors, uh, were from Mexico. And, uh, I, I wish to say to everyone, "Feliz Navidad y un prospero año nuevo", which means, um, Merry Christmas and a Prosperous New Year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Enjoy your families.
Thank you. Mr. Stedman.
Well, happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Um, in regard to the book that, um, Councilman Baker's been referring to and others have commented on, I hope there's at least a, a footnote that mentions a Spartan Rose Bowl victory and a Red Wing Winter Classic victory on January 1st, but we'll, we'll see how that plays out. Um, on a, um, I guess, a more serious note, council is aware that I've reported you from time to time on, uh, the status and goings-ons regarding medical marijuana. Well, there are developments brewing out of Lansing. As many of you know, if you've been following some of the news reports over the last couple of weeks. Um, and it is, this, the, it's already gotten through the, um, State House uh, and will be taken up by the State Senate, uh, probably next month. Uh, but there's three bills that are, are working their way through our Michigan Legislature dealing with medical marijuana. The most significant one that I want to mention to you right now is House Bill 4271. And it's significant, in my view, because what it would do is legalize medical marijuana dispensaries. The, the House bill that I referred to calls them provisioning centers. But right now, under case law, uh, dispensaries are not allowed in Michigan. That's how our appellate courts have interpreted this. So, basically, this would be a legislative reversal of what the courts have said. Now, what this law will do, though, is allow, uh, local governments, including the city of Berkeley, to either outright prohibit provisioning centers, uh, or to regulate them. So, uh, this is coming down the pike. It may be something that we will need to act on fairly quickly. Uh, and I just kind of want to plant, plant the seed for council to start thinking about both, uh, individually and, and ultimately collectively, um, where we want to land on this is, is the city. Do, do we, we want these types of provisioning centers in Berkeley? If so, under what terms and conditions? Or is this something that just does not fit within the fabric of our community? But, uh, the way this is going, it looks, I think, very likely, uh, that this is going to make its way through the legislature, uh, perhaps even next month, and that the governor may very well sign it into law. And so, it's going to be.
well sign it into law, and so it's going to be thrown in our laps as to how we want to deal with that in Berkeley. So I will keep you apprised.
Thank you. I suppose the moral of the story is stay tuned.
Stay tuned for further news.
Very good. Well, I have just a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to welcome Jonathan Roberts, our new Public Safety Officer in the city, twenty-two-year-old officer with a lifetime's worth of achievements in those twenty-two years. It teaches you a couple of things. It teaches you that parenting matters. Parenting always matters, and you can see that in the level of achievement, the commitment, the passion, the quest for excellence that came through his performance tonight. And likewise, the welcome he received from his colleagues. They filled the room here with our Public Safety Officers to make him welcome and to make a statement about their collegial spirit, and that is one of the great assets of our community, the spirit of cooperation, collaboration and mutual support of one another. And so we welcome him joining our force. With regard to Councilmember Baker's book, his comment about the notion of forgiveness should not be overlooked, and we talk about giving gifts at this time of year. The gift of forgiveness is a powerful gift, and there may be people in our lives that we may need to forgive so that we emancipate ourselves in the process. We may need to forgive ourselves as well, and so that brings a perspective on the holiday season that we are celebrating, the notion of Christmas. And so may I say, in the language I grew up with, "Nolig fehen is feywashiiv," which means simply, "Happy Christmas to all of you." And on that note, is an motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekla, with support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrek?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The December sixteenth meeting of the Thirty-Fifth Council is adjourned.